All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Monday, October 24th, City Council Meeting. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting tonight with the, uh, let's see, we're gonna have the prayer from Reverend Matt McCullum, Trinity Presbyterian Church, followed by the pledge.
Let's pray. God, we give you thanks for the grace we have received from your hand this day, and especially we give you thanks for this community and for those special people that make this such a special place to live. We thank you for our city employees and teachers and firefighters and police officers and paramedics and small business owners, everybody who makes sacrifices in order to be a blessing to others. We lift up to you now our mayor and city council that they would make good and wise choices, and we give you thanks for the good work that will be done here, and we'll leave this place eager to love you and serve you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend. Good seeing you again, sir. We got to sit next to each other at the football game a couple of weeks ago. All right, council, the first item up is approval of the minutes of the October 10th, regular city council meeting and the October 10th work session. Anyone have any comments or corrections, adjustments on that?
Make your improvements, I should say.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, mayor, your report.
Have a long list, so I decided to stand up. So I just was going to report this weekend was a really busy, busy weekend. We had tennis, hosted a family fun day, and if y'all were out there, you would know that the courts are getting, getting a lot of use. Of course, I was hit up multiple times to start working on a master plan for the tennis center. Also, we hosted an Eastern Shore master swim meet at the, at the pool, which was well attended, and also, of course, Vief had their event in downtown Fairhope. Last Friday, we also held our employee tenure awards, where we recognize employees for their length of service to the city. One of my favorite events throughout the year, because we get to recognize the people who work so hard every day, not only for us that are in this room, but all the citizens of Fairhope. So we were also able to recognize Officer David Miller, he's an SRO, and he was our employee of the year. If y'all know Officer Miller, he never meets a stranger, he's always there to mentor our youth and to, and just, you know, puts a smile on people's face. He is just a great guy and somebody that we are very lucky to have in our employment. So congratulations to him. Also, I just wanted to report, we did have two former employees that passed away this past week, so I hope you'll keep their, their family in your prayers. Dan and Atkinson, who worked at the Knicks Center, and also Paul Bednarowski, who worked for almost 20 years at Quell Creek Golf Course. So both had lengthy illnesses, and just please keep their family in your prayers. Also, we had a great meeting of the Triangle Steering Committee. Councilman Martin was there, it's just a really good group, lot of good feedback, Jessica did a great job facilitating that meeting, and Christopher Grant and his team from Thompson Engineering were there. I think we're gonna see a really great project with the, with the Triangle. Also, just this coming up this weekend, we have the witch's ride on Thursday, and trick-or-treat in downtown Fairhope, pray for no rain, on Saturday, we have that also, and just remind folks that we will, once council approves, it will close off a portion of downtown, basically from the, on Section Street, from right there as you enter at the Hampton Inn, down to Johnson, and then also on Fairhope Avenue from Bancroft to Church. We have seen an increase in participants in trick-or-treat over the past several years, and just for the safety of those little ones, we want to make sure we do that. Also today, we did host 13 state welcome center employees, 13 of those were in town today, they were visiting Fairhope, Daphne and Spanish Fort. We're happy to host them at Another Broken Egg for lunch, and then they were shopping in downtown, they also went to the Grand Hotel, and gives us a chance just to showcase Fairhope. A lot of them, we had some from Huntsville, Madison, they're from all over the state, but they had never been to Fairhope, several of them told me they had never been here. They go to Orange Beach and Gulf Shores, and they always see the sign, but just never get to get off on the Eastern Shore. So they were glad to be able to see what Fairhope, Daphne and Spanish Fort all has to offer, and hopefully they'll spread that word. I told them, send them here, but then we'll let them go back home. Don't, don't come to stay. So, and the other thing I just want to mention is, I know there's a lot of items on the agenda for procurement tonight, to purchase. I do know that a lot of these items are over budget, we're about $40,000 over budget collectively on projects and on equipment that we're purchasing, we don't take that lightly. I think Councilman Burrell made mention that we were trying to answer all the questions ahead of time. Kim and I have been working with the staff, you know, when we see things coming in over budget on those green sheets, we get with them, we're like, where are you gonna cut? You know, how are you gonna make it this loss revenue? Because we know, just because we have inflation throughout our country, doesn't mean that we can continue to support these kind of cost increases. We're well aware of that, and very conscious and just in the forefront of our mind every time we look at those. So just want to assure you of that, and also just remind everybody to please vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. The next item up is gonna be public participation, and I think we've got a lot of people here always glad to see citizens engaged, but just want to address this before we get started. This is gonna be to speak to Agenda Items 8 through 31, and if you come to the mic, you'll have to give your name and address to the city clerk. You've got three minutes, we are gonna hold fast to three minutes and cut you off if you hit that three-minute mark, and if you're gonna repeat what the person before you said, we just may let you say, I agree with whatever they said. We don't want to have too lengthy of a conversation, but I do want to hear from everybody. So with that being said, the floor is open for public participation.
Good evening, and it's a pleasure to speak before you this evening. I am addressing Agenda Item Number 8, and I'm encouraging city council to not opt in to a medical marijuana dispensary in Fairhope. The Alabama Legislature, although they approved to allow a medical marijuana dispensary, not all legislators were in favor of passing this legislation. In our own county, Representatives Matt Simpson, Shiver, and Baker boldly stood against passing this legislation. Our own District Attorney Wilters has publicly stood against passing this legislation. Under a public comment period during this legislation consideration, Dr. Marcia D. Rollerson stated that the list of conditions doctors will be able to treat under this law was developed by state legislators, not by physicians. There are key problems with this law, and they include worker training, accountability, data collection, inspections of these dispensaries, doctors' education, et cetera, and the need for reform to this law is necessary. Currently, effort is underway to address these reforms through legislation in the next session. Briefly, the FDA has approved products such as Marinol, Cindris, and Epidiolex. These products are obtained through a patient's physician and obtained through a pharmacy, and monitored by that patient's physician. There are no other FDA-approved drug products that contain the psychoactive drugs THC and CBD. According through their own website, the FDA continues to be concerned at the proliferation of products asserting to contain CBD that are marketed for therapeutic or medical uses, although they have not been approved by the FDA. Selling unapproved products with unsubstantiated therapeutic claims is not only a violation of the law, but also can put patients at risk as these products have not been proven to be safe or effective. This deceptive marketing of unproven treatments raises significant public health concerns because patients and other consumers may be influenced to not use the therapies to treat the serious diseases and fatal diseases that they may have. These are the vulnerable, these are the people I'm asking you to protect. Unlike drugs approved by the FDA, products that have not been subject to FDA review as part of the drug approval process, and my time is up, please do not pass this ordinance. Thank you. Carol Wilson, 489 Bartlett Avenue, Fairhope.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, city council members. I am Billy Wise, I live at 104 Pars Circle in lovely Fairhope. I'd like to talk tonight on Agenda Item Number 8. I am basically opposed to it. I've got a couple of news items. The first one is from Spotsylvania County, Virginia, dated October 21st this year. On the 6th of May this year, four-year-old Tanner Clements of Spotsylvania County died from ingesting THC-laced marijuana gummy bears. This is the same product that's in the Alabama bill. Tanner's mother has been indicted on felony murder charges in the death of her son. So here we have a four-year-old dead, his mother indicted for murder charges because some folks in the Virginia Legislature thought it would be a great idea to authorize the sale of marijuana in the state of Virginia. I have another news item from Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Traffic Area, this is in Colorado. Colorado's one of the states that's gone all the way to unrestricted use of marijuana. In their report, their 2020 report, which is the most recent one that they've added up, or had the data for, 66% of the accidental exposures to morve, to marijuana by children from zero to eight years of age was to edible forms of marijuana. That's the kind we got coming here to good old Alabama. For all forms of marijuana, that would be smoking it, drinking it, the CBD oil, and for the edibles, exposure rates for children aged zero to 12 years was 267% higher compared to the next highest age group, 13 to 17 years. So folks, they're going after our kids, the young ones. I've got a news item from Mobile, Alabama, October the 8th, 2022. Applications for medical marijuana cards, this is an authorization card that anyone who has any marijuana on their person must have this card to be legal, to not be arrested. Applications for these marijuana products, or I'm sorry, these cards, will be screened by a panel of students from the University of South Alabama in Mobile. Would anyone care to guess just what percentage of these medical cards are gonna be approved by a panel of college students? Got a news item from Montgomery, Alabama, this month. Earlier this year, the Alabama State Legislature made a very bad decision in legalizing the sale of medical marijuana in Alabama. Now the appointed Marijuana Board is pushing to establish so-called medical marijuana dispensaries in over half of the 67 counties. I ask you gentlemen, please do not authorize a marijuana, medical marijuana dispensary in town Fairhope. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Zachary Huey, I'm at 516 Polo Trace in Daphne, Alabama. I'm here to speak about item A as well. There's been a lot of anecdotal evidence shared, and I'm concerned that we have not seen a lot of information from states where legalization has already occurred. The own Alabama Medical Cannabis Commission often looks to Minnesota, the Minnesota Department of Health has a lot of data regarding the ongoing treatment and efficacy for different conditions that we are here treating in Alabama. What we've seen from this data from the Minnesota Department of Health is a 48% efficacy rate for self-reported patients. On a scale of one to seven, that means 48% reported is seven. Further, crime and traffic accidents. Within Minnesota during the first year of legalization, Minnesota did not see an increase in crime. Furthermore, accidents involving marijuana, this being in Colorado now, excuse me for jumping around due to time, traffic accidents did not significantly increase in Colorado from 2014 to 2019. As a reminder, they legalized recreational in 2012. Furthermore, that information is confounded by other variables, including multiple different substance uses, and also testing is difficult for cannabis on, on the scene in the way alcohol is much easier to test. Ongoing to child cannabis use. According to the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey in Colorado, marijuana use has consistently declined year over year among high school and middle school-aged children. Regulation gives us the opportunity to control this substance and make sure it's used healthy in our community instead of remaining a part of the black market. Again, the greatest risk to children in our community continues to be alcohol and tobacco. Regarding overdose deaths, according to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, there have been no reports of overdose deaths related to cannabis. Cannabis can cause paranoia, it can cause panic, it can exacerbate symptoms in people's schizophrenia. However, anecdotal evidence does not amount to scientific research. Furthermore, on the other hand, opioids have caused 92,000 deaths in 2020 alone. Providing people an alternative to the much more dangerous narcotics already readily available is a valuable asset to our community. Furthermore, with Fairhope, we are not trying to legalize it, this is not the body that's passed this law. This is a body that's determining whether or not we have the opportunity to regulate it within our community, and we have the opportunity to control how and where marijuana is possessed by those members of the community who need it as an alternative treatment source. That is the main points I wanted to address, I did want to take some additional time to address the information that I see is of a concern to the community. Doctors are required to have a year of experience with a special board in order to prescribe, or two years of experience if they're not a special licensed board. There are limits on your patient relationship, you have to have an inpatient treatment. Furthermore, the prescription is only valid for 90 days, at which point you have to go back to your treating physician to be prescribed additional marijuana. Furthermore, the daily dosages start at 50 milligrams per patient, and then that can only be increased with your doctor's appropriate care. If someone is prescribed more than 75 milligrams on a daily dosage level, their license will be revoked. Alabama has taken a very safe and efficient manner to bring this product to market. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Sandy Bundy, and I live at 105 Sand Hill Court. I want to talk on number eight, the cannabis medical facility. I agree with the first two who spoke, we shouldn't have it in Fairhope. There are so many ways to deal with pain, you got chiropractor, you've got acupuncture, you've got doctors, there's no need for it, and a heck of a lot more research needs to go into it to find out the real truth about how these clinics have affected communities in other states. And I don't think it's positive at all, everything I've heard has been negative. The other thing I want to talk about real quick is, you were talking about these little holes in the city, little pods or whatever, you know, what to do with these little tiny areas between businesses? Why don't you make little gardens, it's just a suggestion, you could have little tiny gardens, places for people to sit, put a little sod down, put some trees down. You're known for flowers, Fairhope flowers are known, but have little mini gardens here and there. You could get the community and the local businesses that surround these areas to perhaps do the work and pay for it, you wouldn't even have to spend a lot of money. And you could be known for Fairhope mini gardens. It's just a thought, I mean, you know, I was just thinking about while you're talking about it. And that's those items, so I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. I think Councilman Burrell was, on the, on the zoning was referring to little lots that just weren't zoned necessarily, not necessarily pocket parks, but, thank you very much. All right, floor is still open. Good evening.
Hello again, Jane Wise, 104 Pars Circle. I'm back. I, I'm hoping that each of you received an email which I sent asking that you not vote for this, and, this is resolution A, and you could raise your hand if you did, and if you had time to look at it, no, okay. Well, it was from the, from the Rocky Mountain High Intensity, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, which is really considered a database for the country and what has gone on with marijuana since they started in 2000 with medical marijuana, and then it went from that to commercialization. And Billy has already talked about this, you all should have paperwork, if you've had time to read it, I know you're all busy, but this is a decision that will go with you, whichever way you vote, I'm sure, but if you vote for it, then I think you will have many more regrets than if you vote against it. And I know some of you have young children, and they're still in your house, and so, and they're here, and they'll, they'll be here. But if you had time to look up this information, if you could get more information, of course you can't tonight, if you do it tonight, but I would ask you to stop and think, if you, I've got too many papers here, I do that sometimes. I'm sure you've heard of the proverb, and I will not ask you to raise your hand, you can, you're a teacher-y kind of person, that's just, you know, that's what I do, but you've heard the proverb, a wise man looks down the road and sees trouble coming, and he changes his path, but the fool goes ahead and suffers the consequences. And thank you, mayor, because you're looking down the road about our finances, and you're trying to do something now rather than skipping down the road and suffering the consequences. So I ask that you all do this this evening. We're going to, you're going to consider legalizing marijuana, and wisdom demands that you look down the road to see what awaits the individuals, that's your children, the families, the community, who live with marijuana legally a part of their lives, and it does change. I could go over a lot of information, this gentleman said there's no, giving some data, and I don't, I'm not saying he's not correct for that situation, but looking at what happened in Colorado at first, there was a huge change in, in traffic problems because of marijuana, and the, the test data's there, the information is there, and you can look it up. And then the impact on children, at one time between ages, this is zero to five years, there's a 268% increase in exposure to marijuana, and these children end up in hospitals, and you also have the elderly, which are a, which have, which are more vulnerable, I would say. So again, I ask you, my time is up, I ask you to please vote against this for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, floor is still open. All right, we'll go ahead and close the floor and move on to council comments. Councilman Burrell?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody that has come to the meeting tonight, or called, or emailed, texted, you know, with their opinions about not only this, this subject, but, you know, a lot of, you know, we have a pretty full agenda tonight, and it really helps to hear from the people, and I just, I want to thank those that, that reached out to me, and, you know, it lets us know where people stand. That's all.
Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I just want to second what the mayor said as far as the employee benefit dinner that we had the other day, I thought it was beautiful. It's always good to, to serve those guys in that capacity, because they do such a good job for this community, and I just want to let y'all know that I appreciate you guys sincerely.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Robinson?
I don't have any comment.
Councilman Bean?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I appreciate you, some of you boys that did make it to that Food Fest, because it was a fine, fine employee meeting, and just that was that much more for me. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Always good to, always good to tell the employees how good a job they're doing and recognize.
Yeah, and on that note, I hate that I was unable to attend the meeting or the luncheon, certainly value all the employees that had a prior engagement, but big congratulations to Officer Miller, he is a, a great guy, and really excited when I saw that he won Employee of the Year, well deserved, so. We'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Hunter. This is a public hearing, and it is for an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, request to establish initial zoning of the Dynamic Holdings LLC property to B2 General Business District concurrent with conditional annexation into the city of Fairhope. And the property is approximately .6 acres and is located south of Spring Run Drive, north of the Wolf Bayview Funeral Home. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I'll kind of race through, but we do have a public hearing, so if anyone has any questions, I'll be able to answer any questions, but we did discuss briefly in work session, so, this is .61 acres, it is currently, it is currently within, outside the city limit, so there is annexation here of B2 request. The applicant, Dynamic Holdings intends to continue a development pattern set by the property adjacent to Spring Run, which is already zoned B2. This is a zoning request, does not have a site plan attached to it, but that is the intent, we've already looked at how utilities will be accessed where the, where the roads, because it is landlocked, so access will be through this area, utilities would follow through in private easements. As you can see on the map to the left, this is currently outside the city limits. Actually, when we first took this in, there was, not zoning, it is zoned now, but I, I don't know what, and I can look that up and have it to you by the, the next reading, this will be, I'm assuming, carried over, so I can find that out if that is a question. The properties around are also B2 in the city, this is one of those pockets, and I think what was meant, we have quite a few of these areas, everything with red, green, purple, yellow are the city limits, and then there's just these, as we call them holes, where it's a piece of property that's never annexed into the city but gets all the benefits that, you know, brings with it, all the challenges that come with traffic utilities, all of those things. So B2 is here, as we always have, there's the list, so black circles on this list are allowed by right, white are, need special approval through the Board of Adjustment. This did go through the Planning Commission who recommended unanimously of approval of this case, staff as well recommends approval of this, this case.
Thank you, council. Ordinance has been introduced, Hunter, thank you for the, for the overview, would y'all like to go ahead and open the public hearing, or do y'all have questions for Hunter first? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, if it's time. All right, seeing no one to speak on this, council, do y'all have any questions for Hunter on this item? All right, you already covered it in the work session, and we'll go ahead and let that one lay over, thank you, sir, and we will move on to item number six, which is a, also a public hearing, an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253. This is a request to establish the initial zoning of the Grand Reserve at Pelham LLC, property to B2 General Business District concurrent with the conditional annexation into the city of Fairhope. The property is approximately 13.3 acres, and it's located on the northwest corner of Greeno Road and Old Battles Road. Hunter?
Yes, sir.
Would someone like to introduce ordinance?
Yeah, I'll introduce the ordinance, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance has been introduced. Go ahead, Hunter.
Yes, sir. So this is, as you said, 13 acres, the image on the left is our zoning map, as you can see, anything in that pale is outside the city limits. The light blue is within the city limits, or anything with, with any color except for that pale orange is within the city limits. So this case, as well as the, an additional case for the properties to the south, which is where Publix is, we'll see that image in a minute, both were heard in front of our Planning Commission, both were recommended approval to annex in as B2. As, as council knows, property has to be contiguous to the city, that has to be in effect, so if these are approved, this would have to come first chronologically, becomes official, advertisements and all that, and then the council can hear the, the next one. In essence, if this one doesn't get approved, the, their public site would have to find another way to be contiguous. So just want to clarify that, because both of these were on the Planning Commission at the same, at the Planning Commission at the same time, that's why the delay getting the other one here. The area, this is a newer aerial image, the subject property, there's two pieces of, of property, or two parcels, subject property's in yellow, the public site you can see under construction to the south. This is a straight zoning request, there are no plans associated with it, it is straight B2, so the use is allowed in B2 would apply, which again are here, black circles are by right, white circles would need approval through the Board of Adjustment, and the other is, has special requirements. The, the only kind of thing that we, we were challenged with a little bit is, is the comprehensive plan and its, its location here for B2. This was not in the historic comprehensive plans or currently approved comprehensive plans, nothing at this section, it wasn't explicitly as one of our notes. However- However, the comprehensive plan also has language that we have to react to development trends and what's happening. And Publix was, as you know, was approved as unzoned. We didn't, weren't able to use our zoning. That, those areas are now either zoned with the county or through Fairhope. Just south of there actually is not, sorry about that. But in the newest comprehensive plan, which is a snippet you see on the screen, it is, they are recognizing and making recommendations that we recognize this as a, a node similar to some of the other areas. So, and that for sake is here, which in, in that case, the development already started there, has created a precedent where B2 would be applicable. This did go through Planning Commission, staff recommended approval, and Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this one if you have any.
Why don't we go ahead and open it for public hearing, and then council, if you've got any questions after that, you may want to take into account the Publix commentary, you can ask Hunter. All right, so this time, the floor is open for public hearing on Grand Reserve at Pelham.
Sandy Bundy, 105 Sand Hill Court.
What is it zoned now?
What is it zoned now?
Unzoned County?
Yeah.
It is, no, it's actually, um...
District.
It was recently given R S F, I believe, larger residential lots.
Okay.
But is it part of the new district? Is it 19 or?
They've had so many, I can't remember which number.
Yeah, I think it's, it's one of those new districts.
Eight.
District Eight.
Eight.
Which means what?
If, if we react to the zoning application as proposed and whether it fits in ours, I didn't look into exactly.
Yeah, District Eight is a district of the county, and they're asking to come into the city.
Okay, well, they, they're asking to have it be approved as a business zoning? Is that it? Well, that's what I'm against. I don't want it to be business. I'd hate for 98 to start looking like 59 south of that gas station. And I think there has to be more green spaces. You could put a lot of things in there. You could designate it as a reserve, a preserve, whatever. But I just would love to see not business after business after business after business on 98. There's enough of that already, and green spaces are getting few and far between these days. So I'm just requesting that it not be, become a business. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on Grand Reserve at Pelham? All right, hearing no one, we'll go ahead and close the floor on that item. And Hunter will move to, or council, did y'all have any questions for Hunter?
No, that lady.
Y'all good?
And I, just, we do a lot of work to make sure we don't have a corridor. If I may just clarify a little bit. What we see in these diets are an effort, I mean, the city has been making an effort on 98 to not be a traditional commercial corridor. Minimum 1987. So these nodes are where we would actually like this commercial, but not up all the way, like a, a traditional corridors. Just want to point that out. This would be the location, which is what we mean by meeting our long-range comprehensive plan, by its location.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item number seven, which is also a public hearing, an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance 1253. And this is a request to consider the applicant, S.E. Civil, acting on behalf of the owner, Burgess Thomason Jr., to amend the existing Montrose Preserve PUD to remove the requirement of preliminary plat for all 18 lots within the PUD, create five development phases, and to include either Option A, allow lots four to six to be sold individually, or Option B, combine lots four to six as one lot to be sold, reducing the lot count from 18 down to 16.
I'll introduce it, council president.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance has been introduced, and Hunter, if you would, sir?
Yes, sir. I think y'all, we did bring, bringing this one up in work session too, so I'll skip on through the formalities and show you the, the application or the, the subject property. You can see on the left is the, our light blue means that's in the city, and it is a current PUD. We'll get into a little history of that in just a second. The aerial on the right shows the undeveloped parcels. And basically, the reasoning for this PUD, it's a quick amendment. You've seen this relatively recently for its approval. There is, and we discussed this in the last meeting, but the, providing an option B, Option A, to allow the sale of lots four through six to be sold either individually, or Option B, allow them to be sold as one lot. In effect, that changes the lot count of the PUD from 16 to 18. And we, as we discussed in the last one, we don't see a, a big issue with that conceptually. It also adds five development phases. And we didn't have a definition of development phase, so what we understand this is, is to remove a condition of the previously approved PUD. So kind of get into that just a little bit. There's another minor change to this that just shifts the, the entrance on 98 slightly, but that was at the request of ALDOT. We foresee, we don't foresee any problems with that. This is the Option A as presented. Lots four through six, you can't see the lot numbers there, but lots four through six are here on the screen. So Option A would allow those to be sold individually, and Option B would those be as one piece of property. Do not see a problem with either one of those. And I, and I also want to make sure I'm clear, when you see our recommendation, we are in favor of this final result of a plan. There's nothing to suggest otherwise. We do like the plan, 18 lots here, being sensitive to both the neighbor, historic neighbors and Greeno Road is a win-win for everyone. I will show you this detail, because this was a, gets to the, some of the, the fundamental issues we're dealing with tonight. It's the right-of-ways. There are historic right-of-ways within this area that have not been open for their, since their inception, almost 100 years. So this shows a, an idea of a 60-foot right-of-way being vacated, split in half, but that was only one option. There were other options of us keeping the right-of-ways, allowing an agreement. This was a county right-of-way, is currently. You should see a resolution November 14th to accept those right-of-ways. That's finally come from the county, so we will be reacting to that. Could be, at that, at the time we approved this, the county keeping that, not opening those up. And we may choose to do that, as, and when I say we, the city of Fairhope, certainly the five of you will make, make those decisions, which would prompt access to be done through easements within the private property. So we approved a concept, and one of the conditions we talked about all the way through this was, and we'll show this, was connectivity and how that is. We've been dealing with connectivity for 30 years. It's been a high priority. So we did make a condition that those access to each lot would be provided in a preliminary plat. So that's where it's getting to. Just to give you a quick history, this did get approved as a 77-lot PUD in 2017. It amended in 2021, this layout we're seeing. Then in March, we received a preliminary plat for lots one through six. Did not have that access as required, so we turned that down in response. We're seeing a, a request that essentially eliminates, if not anything else, at minimum, the, the condition of approval highlighted on the screen right there. We required, at a minimum, not our full subdivision regulations, but at a minimum, access to each lot, how that is going to be addressed. So, you know, you can also see all streets, whether public or private, that's the, there's a lot of information in here, and how this all gets accommodated was what we had a problem with. It was implied, we snuck that through a little bit. You know, these are the dates we discussed this. When we put staff reports out there, when we talk about them in public meetings, they're on YouTube, you can go see them right now. Most of you were here for at least two of these. Councilman Martin was there for three of them, I believe, at Planning Commission. They ran in the, in the advertisements. To just come back now and ask for, to remove one condition is very difficult for us. We have review procedures for this PUD. The conditions of that would have been changed. You know, we, we tried to kind of get out of the way a little bit, not be too bureaucratic, just get out of the way, let them go figure out the, the solutions. And from our perspective, that condition was in there from the beginning. I, I can't, I can't make somebody read our information, watch our videos, listen while we're talking. There's a lot of words, but we were upfront with that. I can't just recommend we throw that out, and, you know, without addressing the PUD in another way. So we agree with A and B. There's, there's problems, and we can discuss those if needed, but for the sake of brevity, I'm going to kind of skim on through. I just want to point out a couple of things. Our, our whole purpose of being in the subdivision regulations, and I highlight this, it's to affect the coordinated and efficient development in the city of Fairhope. That's the proper arrangement of streets, of utilities, of all of those things. Coming in and reviewing properties and at three lots at a time is a burden on your staff. When we have our meetings and sitting down and doing that. So with, with what I'm asking for, and access to each lot and utilities for each lot, I can get our utilities in a meeting one time, we can figure that out, or Public Works, we can figure that out, and then move forward and let people build or, or without the multiple meetings. So this, that's the efficient method. Whether it happens in a PUD or preliminary plat, at the end of the day, I don't care, but we need to figure those things out before it becomes multiple owners we're dealing with, construction projects that we're, we're not exactly sure how are, are getting access. And then in the Planning Commission, there was also, I brought this up in the, in the work session. There was, there may be some confusion, because in the county, the, the county has used the word P, letter or acronym PUD to describe something that's part of their subdivision regulations. And as y'all know, subdivision regulations are kind of, here's the rules, follow them. That's a little unusual. Planning unit developments are, in most places, a product of zoning, which is the case in Fairhope. And the best description I've ever seen for a PUD is it's a negotiation between a developer and a city, to be able to get to a unique property, a project, and deal with the issues of, with the land and the project, and come up with an agreement that how we're going to develop that, without creating precedence on other projects. So this is unique. I can tell you, there's no exact project out there where these exact conditions are in place. I can tell you, there's many other projects that deal with their own conditions, specific to that site and to that project that's presented, that does have those. And on the screen shows one example. Fly Creek PUD started the commercial product on the front end, and you can see that on the aerial, provided roads and streets, provided that access. So while we didn't know exactly what that was going to look like, we only knew conceptually, we knew we had access for utilities and roads. They were there, they were in place, and you can see as those, in 2016, this phase was approved, you can see how those have been built out. I do not think we need an amendment to allow Option A and B. I think, so I want to be clear when I'm about to read the recommendation that we have and, and Planning Commission. Option A and B is about lots. I think we covered that in the approval of the PUD. No one had a problem with that, and I think our zoning ones, the powers need to make that decision, because it's in substantial performance with the PUD. So with that said, we do recommend denial of this specific request, and Planning Commission also unanimously recommended denial of this case. I'm sure we've had some questions and other comments, but I'm here if needed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that presentation. Before, council, before we ask any questions, let's go ahead and open the floor for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wish to?
Sandy Bundy, 105 Sand Hill Court. I live in Rock Creek, which is right across from this development. Two concerns. There's a line of trees, then there's power lines, utility lines, whatever, and another line, and then the trees. So if they do develop this, are those trees coming down and expose the power lines? Or are there going to be trees, power lines, and more trees? And how far from 98 inward to the end of the lots is that going to be? Is it going to be 100 feet, 200 feet, 150 feet? That's a big concern.
If we, if you want me to address these individually, or wait till we get this?
I mean, I guess you can address that one real quick, if you don't mind.
So that's one of the reasons we want to see a preliminary plat. So as part of that PUD, there's a dark green line that fronts Greeno Road. Even from the 2017 approved plan, that was a 40-foot buffer that is to leave things alone, and that screens Greeno Road. There is, however, a little bit, you know, thi, this is what's on the county map. Survey shows that line, power line, kind of right at the property line. And as y'all know, when you've got big overheads like that, electric company is going to make you keep it cleared out, and, and that kind of defeats the purposes of the buffer. So when we get to clear information on where this is located, it may be that buffer has to extend a little bit to accommodate the 40 feet. If, if this clearing is 30 feet, well, that's 15 foot of it, doesn't meet the, the screening goals of what we were trying to accomplish with that buffer. So we may have to figure that out. But good question.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That was the first question. The second question is access. How many to 98 from these houses, directly to 98 is there? Because you have a light at Rock Creek, you have another one at the Bay Shore Academy. If you put in extra accesses there, you're going to jam up traffic and people coming out. You don't really need to have any access from those, from that little area to 98 directly. That's, that's another concern. And if you don't know exactly what they're going to plan, I wouldn't approve any of it. I mean, 40 feet isn't enough, because if you look there, it's probably a good 15 feet or 20 feet to the power line itself from the road. Has anybody gone out there to measure exactly how long 40 feet is and where it exactly comes, and if there's enough trees actually to be a buffer? That's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Hunter, if you'd just address.
I'll get the, so there are historic right-of-ways, there is one access point, as you approved previously, that, that ran pretty much perpendicular. There is no access on Rock Creek on that side, but there is a crossover, and ALDOT did recommend lining up with that crossover. So you see this road jog a little bit. That will not line up with another intersection that would prompt, prompt the traffic signal or something along those lines. I will, I don't know if I have the language. I believe it was in a condition. It was here. So 40 feet is preserving what's there, but we do have a condition there that buffer shown plans shall remain natural, except for the allowance of plant material to be installed where a visual buffer does not exist. So if in that 40 feet, you, you have a gap, which is kind of natural in a wooded area, then plant some things to create that buffer. I'm not sure where to leave it, but we'll, we'll start there.
All right, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Quinn, 7172 Taylor Street. So I have about six neighbors behind me who are concerned about, not only access, but the other engineering issues that would come with those lots. And if you do it in phases, how would all the stormwater be engineered? It's just very confusing that we were here in February and we're back again, and I can't tell you how many times we've been here, so we're wearing out the neighborhood. But we want to support the city on Hunter's recommendation, and thank you. I don't know if anybody else has anything, if no one says. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is David Connor, and I represent the Thomassons. And just want to, I don't think this thing is near as complicated as we may be trying to make it. And I, first off, I want to start out by saying, I think you guys have, you all have worked very hard, and the developers worked hard, the owners worked hard, to come up with a plan that I think is good for everybody. I think the community has gotten comfortable with that over time. I was not at your previous hearings, but I've heard of the work and effort that was done to address those things. What we have on the table is a 77-lot PUD that was approved previously. And if we can't make this development plan work, then it will revert back to that 77-lot plan. I don't think anybody here wants that to happen. And so what we're asking for, and we really are asking for, is just some assistance to help the Thomassons phase this property so that they can bring this plan into fruition. They have two buyers that were potentially interested in buying the property that's occupied by lots one, two, and three, as depicted, and also four, five, and six. And we mentioned that we have an option here, because one of those buyers has told us that if he buys it, he would like to just have one lot. So instead of having to come back or ask for administrative approval, that's why we submitted the phasing plan. And so what we're asking for, and I think to summarize this up, we're asking for a change that corrects our alignment with the crossover. I don't hear any objection to that at all. We're asking for a change that lets us have an option A and B for Phase Two, three lots versus one lot, which I don't hear any objection about that at all. We're also asking that we be allowed to have a phasing plan that allows us to design each phase as we sell it, as necessary. And you say, why is that important to us? Because of the fact that this is not 77 lots that this is being financed over, it's 18 lots, maybe as few as 16 lots. And cost and timing of those costs are very important. If we're required to submit a preliminary plat for all five phases, all 18 lots up front, that's $100,000-plus expenditure that you would have to come out of pocket on, not knowing when and if those second and third phases would be built, five, 10, 15, who knows? It could be that they're all built at one time, and there would be nothing that would keep us from submitting all three phases in the future at one time, or four phases, or five phases. But it gives our clients the flexibility to address this issue, not asking you to waive anything. All the things that Hunter and your staff are, very able staff, and they're looking out for your interest, they're trying to, but I think we're just being a little overprotective in this case. Everything that they have expressed as concerns will be addressed at the preliminary plat phase. Just like if you, if this property were carved up, and it is, this is blocks. These three lots that you see in these blocks are lots of record. Where we're showing our roads is a question about where we plan to build our roads. You've already approved a master plan for these 18 lots that show the, the road alignment. There are also already existing rights of way that are platted and have been for over, I guess, over 100 years, that shows, and we're using those lot alignments, those road alignments for the road, with the exception of the realignment along 98. And again, I think your staff is working very hard, you have a good staff, they're doing well, but I, in this case, we're just asking you to help us, help us help everybody. If we can get this project going, then that 77-lot PUD is behind us forever. We don't have to worry about that coming back. It enables this family to begin to sell off this parcel of property and be able to bite it off in chunks that they can afford to develop over time. Your concerns about preliminary plat, road placement, utilities, every one of those things has to be met, and in your timeframe for your review by your engineers, based on plans prepared by an engineer. There's nothing different that will happen to you over time. The only thing different is that we're being required to do it all up front in this scenario. Again, what we're asking for here is for you to help us help everybody. And that is to relax and remove this condition that requires us to submit all five phases or, actually, we're approved for three phases right now, I believe it is, under our existing plan. We're asking you to help us do five, and that just gives us flexibility on the timing of how it's developed, how it's drawn, and how it's submitted. And I do note for you that there are numerous, you might be able to think of two or three instances where you may have required this, but I can tell you, based on our conversations with engineers, there are numerous projects where you do not, you might approve a 2, 3, 400-lot subdivision where you don't require preliminary engineering across the whole site. As a matter of fact, for the 77-lot PUD that you all approved in 2015, that requirement was not there. So we're just asking you to reconsider that, knowing that you have all the protections in place that you need to have. Would it be multiple phases opposed to one? Yes. But all of those protections, all of your procedures, everything that you have is still in place. We'll have to follow those all when they come forward. You'll have the opportunity to protect yourself. We have to provide for utilities, we have to provide for all those things, but it allows us to break it up and do it in a timely manner that helps my clients. And we just ask you to consider that.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Floor's still open. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? All right. Counsel, do y'all have any questions for Hunter, or any comments you'd like to make on this?
I have some.
Yes, sir. Well, let's start down there with you.
A couple of things. I'm, I'm a little confused on why there's even an option A to sell them individually. Can they not be sold individually now?
They would have a problem. There's a more of a legal problem than I probably should be the one asking. There were lots of record. When the city accepted the PUD, it did accept a 77-lot PUD that took a few years to get approved and I think made everyone happy, that we accepted that with the road as drawn and planned. So there's a history of these right-of-ways, long history of, they've been on paper for quite some time, but there's topographic challenges to, to that. So, they wouldn't have access, there, there's an approved plan, then you would basically have partners with that approved PUD. So, if, as you see, some of those common areas don't align with the historic lots. So to meet this PUD... Yeah, this lot extends all the way to 98 in the, in the historic plat.
So let me move ahead then. Did we not approve the 18-lot PUD?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And then, if those lots are there, four, five, and six?
But they're, they're not, they're different dimensions. So, that lot, there's 40 feet cut off those lot for common area.
So what we're seeing is not exactly what was approved.
That's, it's not what the historic lots' dimensions are.
Let me go back to something that Mr. Connor said. And, and, and I don't think I'll be, I've known you a long time, I won't be able to tell you. He said that if we don't make these changes, that this would revert back to the 77-lot PUD that was approved.
That's right.
How does the, how does that supersede the 18-lot PUD, which has been approved? I don't understand that.
Yes, sir. So, the 18-lot, so, a PUD that we approved in last year, in 2021, there are revisions. It expires in now.
It's got a sunset clause.
Yes. There, so there's revisionary clauses in, in now. That was not in the 77-lot. So my worry, and we discussed this at length, and the more and more I dig into the history of those right-of-ways, the more and more I'm convinced there, there is something. Why were, why were those not opened up? Those went to the Alabama Supreme Court on a vacation. The county has never opened them up. Came to our meeting, said they're not going to open them up, they're not going to vacate them. So what we accepted as a city, and, and we should accept those, I, I have, you know, we accepted all the land around those right-of-ways, we should accept them so that we can make a, a decision on what to do with those. But we accepted those with a PUD that had protections on any of that historic problems about how they were planted. It, it's a specific plan we're dealing with. So, I, I do think we need to some level of protection on, instead of just expiring, and then we go back to the same debate, what happens with those right-of-ways for 70, 80 years?
Yeah, I mean, your staff recommends denial, then you're almost endorsing going, I mean, going back to 77 lot.
I, I, I believe in the science of muddling through. That's, that's actually a, a very technical term. Everyone was happy with that. It meant everyone's, there was, the only reason we don't have that one is because it wasn't from, that was on the development side. Everyone was happy with that 77 lot. I don't see that as a problem.
I don't understand, I know everybody's happy, but to me, less is better in this town. I don't, I don't, I mean, it's, it's, 18's better than 77, and...
I agree with that.
16's better than 18, so...
I, I agree with that. It's the, how we get there. I, I, like I said, from day one, I like this plan. We can, we can deal with the same issues we have in a PUD amendment. What we tried to do, and I do want to clarify one thing that Mr. Connor said, those plans show a concept on where the roads would be. That is not the approved location. We said it in every meeting. There's four options for how those, where exactly those lay out. That could be an easements with inside this property. So, you know, for example, if the county stood by their stance and said, we're not vacating, we're not opening it up. At those points in time when we have recommended approval of this PUD, the county was still owning those. They had not reached out to us yet to say, hey, take those over, and have it since we approved the 77 lot. So that was a question out there. So, these lots may change. It's not the end result we're struggling with here. It's how we get there. And right now, we don't have any answers.
So, let me get to the, a couple more points, though. I know the other councilman we're going to talk to this, too. I don't have any problem with four through six being combined. I want to make sure that specifically states that's a residential lot, because I know what happens, which brings me to phases. I'm not real crazy about four to five phas... I, I hear you, Mr. Connor, it's a merit of what you said, but I mean, I don't know if there's a, you know, a happy medium that we could have, you know, less than four or five phases, but not all be done at one time. Just curious if, if that's been explored. Because if you get some really large lots and they sit around for 15, 20 years, you get, you know, two councils into the future, and they don't know the history, and next thing you know, they're coming back with a request, you can make that commercial property or something. And that's, that's why, you know, putting off the, you know, the preliminary plat for all of them worries me, and then also, I want that four to six, specifically stated it's going to be residential.
And accommodating some of those, so the only issue with the combining those lots is if we do vacate the right-of-ways, chicken or egg sometimes, and that's what we need to know. If, if those were combined, you, Daphne Water comes through those right-of-ways, and a goal, remember, is not to, not to really interact with Taylor and some of those other historic. So where are utilities coming through? Would they be pushed out to the highway? ALDOT's not going to let us put things there, whereas if we know on the front end, and remember, we set at a minimum in preliminary plat, access, and that includes utilities where we get those things. We've got 50-foot right-of-way requirements in most PUDs. That's why we don't have this condition, because we know where things are going. This is one, we're allowing private roads, and we're allowed to do that within a PUD and not to create a precedent. But it comes with some, okay, we need points of clarification before we get there. So that, that's, that's what we're really dealing with. There's some topography challenges, there's some where things go, and we don't want to create a roadblock that, that prevents us being able to meet, meet the goals stated in this PUD. That's what we're doing.
What if you combine phases one, two, and three? Just let's say, call that phase one, and you combine phase four and five, and call that phase two. I got to think they've got a buyer for four, five, and six, because they want to combine it into one. That tells me somebody's talking about that right there. That takes one piece out of the puzzle right there.
And I think the, the biggest challenge, when you look at it, is, is getting, of course, the 98 access, as shown here. And then this little area here, that's where topography gets really strict, really steep, and floodways. I don't know where floodways and wetlands and all those exactly are, but you get some steep banks, you know, coming here, so it, it can be done, but would it mean that radius kind of swings out a little bit? They got to carve into the lots? So it's, it's one of those things, if you combined it all of these, I, I think that would get to the root of the matter, because the biggest challenges are here and here.
So you're saying if you combine with Jack's proposition, one, two, and three, and then four and five?
You're, you're kind of, by the, by the time you do that, I think you've met, the, the biggest challenges are resolved. I mean, that's what we kind of look at. There, there's, the, the two biggest challenges are here and here, in my opinion. So once you get past this point, you're, you know, you're only connecting to those five. And remember, these were development phases they talked about, not construction phases. You know, we have, we don't have a problem with a construction phase. So, I, I don't know what good that would do from saving, and maybe that's a question better for the option.
Saving money?
So I'm...
If that's a concern?
I'm still, even if you do that, so I, you know, we met with, with David and, and Mr. Connors and Larry, and, and I hear what David is saying. The only, what I have a problem with, when I hear you say that you, that, that the next buyer would have to come back through the city to do the preliminary plats as they gain property rights, correct? That's what you're saying. What I worry about is, what do they find because we didn't do our due diligence, and how much of a burden would that become on the city, with us now taking on ownership of those right-of-ways? And, you know, looking forward, you, you don't really want to punt, in other words, on other people, when you have the opportunity to do it correctly the first time. Those are my, those are the only concerns, and I, and I agree, that that may be a way to do it, but the question is, is that the wisest way to do it when you don't know, when there's so much unknown with those right-of-ways? You know, I just think that's a lot of burden and a lot of chance that you're putting on the city and other people that come in behind you. That's my opinion.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, do y'all want to go ahead?
Yes, I would. Thank you. So I got a couple of things that, that, just thinking through this. Debbie is, is correct. If I remember right, this came before the council in there, you can correct this if I'm wrong, this came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe for an informal review early 2015 in a, in a form that had retail and, and multifamily and all kind of stuff, and was, was responded to with a, not a no, but a heck no, and, and the, the neighbors were out in full force, and everybody hated that first project. And when it came, it morphed over, over time, to the point where I remember sitting down there in Cory's chair congratulating the, the property owner, the developer, and the community around it by being able to work together and reach some agreement where everybody seemed to be happy with what they were going to do. And it was that 77-lot phase. And, and then, and then we came back last year and had an amendment to that PUD, which again, I think Jack's right, 18's better than 77. I think everybody agrees with that. But, but the issue I have now, we're having another amendment to the amendment, and the issue I have is anytime you get into something piecemeal, and I'm not an engineer, and I don't pretend to be, but, but my thought is, especially when you're dealing with a piece of property that's, that's this topographically challenging, and especially when you've had the issues that we've had in these meetings with concerns about easements and connectivity and all these other problems, that if you start doing it one piece at a time, and like Cory said, maybe punting the bigger problem down the road, maybe there is a problem, maybe there isn't, but you won't know if you kick it down the road to the next guy. And, and the response to that being, it, it's more, this is the most financially profitable way for the current owner to develop it, that's not really a good enough answer for me, when you have that many unknowns. for me when you have that many unknowns. Um, you know, maybe there's not a problem doing it that way, but when you're dealing with uncertainty, it's not worth the risk to those around it when it's simply a money issue. Um, you know, if there truly is a desire to make this right and get this right, then sometimes that takes the investment on the front end. And even so, that doesn't mean it's a guaranteed perfect outcome. But at least everybody crossed their Ts and dotted their Is to make sure that we did everything we could to make it that way. That's my thoughts at least.
Thank you, Councilman Boone. Your thoughts?
Actually, that's everything I was going to say because in my, in all honesty, decisions made on the unknown are not good decisions. It's just that simple. Been developing land for a lot of years and every known factor that was not known, I found out what was going to happen beforehand. And sometimes there were problems, we had to rework it or others. But decisions based on unknowns are never good decisions.
All right. I, I don't want to reiterate everything everybody said, but I will say I do remember the metamorphosis of this, um, project over the years. And, and I do agree with Councilman Robinson. I feel like I remember pretty distinctly at, at one point, and I know there are a lot of head shaking right now, but I remember everybody coming and speaking out in favor because I was, I was very surprised. It was, it's very rare to have a developer presenting a project and have everyone in the community that spoke speak in favor of it. Now, I'm not saying everybody's in favor of it, but everybody that showed up to the meeting and spoke seemed to be in favor of that seventy-seven lot, uh, project. I'd love to see us get to either sixteen or eighteen. I think that's a win for the community. Um, I agree with what y'all are saying about, about punting down the road, uh, potential problems. I would be willing, if, if you think it would address the major issues, it's what Councilman Burrell may have been suggesting or alluding to, if you could combine one, two, and three into a phase one and then four and five into a phase two, if that would address most of the issues. If there was any cost savings to make it worth doing, I'd be willing to consider that. But I don't know about breaking it into five different phases. That just seems kind of lengthy.
Jim, can I ask another question, please?
Absolutely.
Hunter, you said something that I wrote down. You said, talking about the, the proposed setback or, or, uh, green space along ninety-eight, and you, you said that would be common area. Common area to what?
Uh, so in a development like this, when you have a developer, most of those have a covenants and it, and that HOA, POA is responsible for maintaining the common area. So everything in dark green here is shown as common area.
So is, is there an HOA or a POA or a?
That would have to be done at the preliminary plat to establish that and see who's maintaining it. So, so it's not the city maintaining those. So having that.
And it wouldn't be just the, whoever bought the property right there. It wouldn't necessarily be their burden either. So if you don't have that preliminary plat set up, then you just kind of have something that slips through the cracks a little bit.
And again, there's nothing, or we, it's PUD. We can get to this, the, the same solution multiple ways. But we went through this review with this, these conditions, these notes, and that's what we said, that, you know, there will be a, um, I believe it's somewhere in here, that common area is maintained by the, that HOA. So that could be set up a different way. You could put restrictions on a piece of private property and that owner has to deal with that individual. That was not the way this PUD was approved.
And my, my last thing is, you know, again, and I don't know why I'm hung up on amendments to amendments, but, but I feel like I've heard Councilman Burrell say this before, is when we start changing and changing and changing and changing, then the original intent of what we agreed to approve gets lost somewhere in there. And so if we're, if we're, if we're eliminating conditions of approval, um, and I know there's at least some point for it, some sunset for it to revert back to the seventy-seven, but even if it did, could they not submit another amendment?
Sure.
Of the eighteen-lot subdivision?
Yeah.
For consideration by the planning and zoning to be considered maybe with a, with, with some, some setup like this? I mean, I just want it to be clear that if for some reason it's denied here, that the seventy-seven is not automatically going to happen because again, resubmissions could be made to get back to eighteen, even if it expires.
That's right.
I want to echo.
And there's, there's another option. I'll throw this out there if we're looking at, uh, because I, I do want to get to the end result.
Yeah, Hunter, I, I want to echo what Jay, you know, I, I think this is excellent. I think we all think the sixteen or eighteen lots is excellent. But what we don't want to do is set a precedent to where we're skipping steps just to save a dollar here and there. And I know that sounds bad, but it is what it is. And, and you were honest. I appreciate it, David. You were honest. It's a dollar amount. But I don't think we want to skip steps. But what we do want to do is we want to get this done. So we're not up here trying to kill this. What we're, we're up here trying to get it in order. Um, and right now, I think we're just a little bit out of order if we do it the way you guys are trying to do it. But we love the idea. We don't want to go back to seventy-seven. So if we can get to a win-win and do things like we're supposed to, um, I, I, you know, we, we got a game, man.
So, and if you, if I may, before, I think there is another option that we haven't discussed. Um, you know, you, you have five options according to our ordinances in front of you. Approve, deny, approve with conditions, further study or rep, you know, send back to the planning commission for, for further study. Um, remain back to them to the proposed amendments.
There's some, some things that's got to be worked through. I would be happy to sit down and talk about exactly what those things are and, and amend the PUD. If we deny tonight, they've got to submit another application. That's another application fee. That's another advertising, all of those things.
It's not up for vote tonight, correct?
No. Well, and we, we could, we would have to rewrite an ordinance anyway to, um, before we do that. So if you did that, and we can address those things explicitly in a PUD. So I brought up Fly Creek. Why those conditions were so explicit is because they had a very explicit plan and we could address the concerns. So, um, that is also an option. We can, we can, and it's, it's kind of up to you. You can, if you want to come, right back to you whenever ready. That may be a couple of months because we're going to have to work through at least the, the right of ways and, and I'm sure there's going to be some design work needed. Um, but, or, or you can, you know, do the same thing, but send it back to planning commission and start over for those ideas. Just another option.
I, I kind of like the sound of that at least because the concern here is the unknown. You know, it's not the plan because I think, as everybody's pointed out, and even I, I'm trying to, trying to interpret head nods and head shakes out there, but it seems that everybody's on board with the sixteen or eighteen. The, the issue is, is, I, I, as Cory, I think, explained, you know, the, the idea at least, whether, not saying you are, but the idea that it feels like maybe we're skipping a step or two, which we're skipping a step or two in the areas that create some of the bigger concern for everybody. And so if, if there is the opportunity or the option for y'all to go back together and maybe map that out a little bit to eliminate some of that unknown so that planning feels better about it, uh, and that the council can feel better about it and the citizens can feel better about it, then I feel like that's probably the best option as opposed to just saying absolutely no, and then everybody go back to the drawing board and we do this again, rinse and repeat in four months.
If there's anything I can say about our folks is they hear you. And so I do have something that I want to offer, and it's really along the lines of what, uh, Councilmember Burrell said. As you, as we mentioned to you, we believe that we have two sales, phase one and phase two, that we believe we can do fairly quickly with some cooperation and help. So we're already approved for three phases of the subdivision. The thing that is getting us again is having to design for the whole project. I don't think you're skipping any steps. I don't think you're leaving anything on the table. Uh, I think you got all the protections in place that you need when the time comes. Assuming this property was divided up into four separate parcels, four separate owners, you'd have to deal with the same things when they came to submit. But hearing what you say, I've talked to our folks and they said that they believe that if y'all would allow us to do a phase one and phase two with a preliminary plat, a phase three and a phase four with a preliminary plat, and then phase five, that would be at the most three plats, three phases, as opposed to five. That would help us to avoid those costs of designing toward the end when we don't have a buyer, don't have a way to go at the moment, and allow us to make those sales upfront. And that sounds about as interesting compromise as I've heard tonight. Again, it started over here and our folks have listened to you. We have got some sales that we think we can accomplish fairly quickly with very little design work involved. So if you would consider approving a phasing plan that where lots one and two have to be submitted on a preliminary plat at the same time, not lots one, two, sorry, phase one and phase two, preliminary plat at the same time, phase three and phase four, preliminary plat at the same time, and then five would be its own, that would allow us to do it, at least carve it up that way to help us, help our problem. It helps everybody. It gets it going down the road. We don't have to worry about reversions. We don't have to worry about going back. And I think that's something that our folks could deal with. That's something that y'all could help us with. And I think that addresses everybody's concerns.
Hunter, does that address your concerns or does it, Councilman?
Yeah. Can you show me, pull, pull that, go over, let me see exactly what they're, Hunter, if you have put a map up or?
Uh, 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 it's.
Let's see what he's saying.
The sensitive parts are here and here to me. I think as you come down this hill and then the access on Green, on Greeno. So as, as Mr. Connors just said, there's little design to be done to sell these six lots. The, the design is here. That's what we're wanting to see. And again, I want to, I want to preface this. This PUD sets up the preliminary plat for planning commission to allow, it, it sets up the fence to allow waivers if needed. You know, there may be, uh, uh, I, I, I think there's actually some good options. Richard Johnson and I discussed this. There's options. Might not have to have detention ponds and maintenance and things like that. Um, you know, the, there's, there's options there if presented to the planning commission. But, but again, the minimum, we, we said a access for all of the lots. Maybe not all the details are provided and they follow up. But again, these are, these are the two areas we're really looking at. I mean, that's, I can't avoid that.
All right. So, so this isn't necessarily work for you, but if it were to be a one, two, and three combined, and then a four and five, would that work for the planning?
If, if they could at least show what that right, what that access looks like because some of this is about, not about engineering. Some of it's about timing. We, we can't make the decisions on the access until we actually have the resolution in front of you. And then it would have to come back to you for vacating those right of ways. If that's what, that's going to be a decision you'll be proposed with in the future to make this exact drawing work. We're going to have a resolution to accept the right of ways from the county. Then there would be one to come and vac, and, and vacate the right of ways. And what that division line is showing in theory is giving the people to the west half of the right of way, giving people to the east half the right of way. That, that's, that's what this is drawn explicitly, but as we stated through multiple meetings, that might not be the exact result. So just selling and moving forward, it, it creates problems. How we get to that point is, I'm flexible, but I, I recommend we, we get to that point.
Council President, I'd like to just make a recommendation. I don't think the council can have to vote on this, Mr. Pugilist, Mayor Yawson. I would just ask you to get with the developer and be my recommendation that you give with the developer. Come up with two to three phases that you think you can live with, that you give to the planning commission. Then you also need to make a recommendation for the next meeting, whether we table it, vote it down, or whatever one of those five options is, is, is the best to not tie up their money for another, you know?
Four months.
Four months, trying to come back and bore us and get this approved. Whatever's the most expedient solution that you can live with and solve the problem.
I'm with that.
In that sense, can I ask your opinions as a, as a commi, as a council? Because this is, this is what I'm kind of leaning on is those steps. Next month, your, or next council meeting, you should have the resolution for acceptance of the right of ways. And then to get this plan, there'll be a res, a, a potential resolution to vacate those right of ways. Is that something you're willing to do? Because to, to get to the answer, I need, I kind of need to know that and see, that's what takes a little time to get to. And that's what we need.
That's a, you know, we, we.
Exactly.
Yes, you can't put us on.
Chicken and egg.
Yeah. We can't answer that right now. Um, yeah. And I think that's part of this project. I mean, when we get into the weeds as far as these right of ways and the, the deep history all the way up to the Supreme Court with these right of ways and access and i- it's pretty convoluted. Uh, it really is. Um, but I do believe we can come up with a solution. I think we just got to work through it.
And we'll, in, in that sense, the easiest way for the applicant is put the, put the access roads within the property, put an easement. That resolves it, you know, and then we know where utilities go. So we'll, I will be happy to sit down.
Well, if you got a conversation.
That's it. Yeah.
I think he's.
Thank you. But it does sound like we'd like to see a way of getting into that sixteen or eighteen lots, but we also want to make sure we're covering our basis on the issues that are concerning to you. So, thank you for your time and, and spending that.
Okay.
Here, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all being here. Um, all right, Council, uh, moving along. We've got item number eight is a final adoption for an ordinance, and this is an ordinance to authorize the operation of a medical cannabis dispensary within the corporate limits of the City of Fairhope. This was introduced at the city council meeting on October tenth. Do you have any comments on this?
I'll make some comments.
Yes, sir. Councilman Burrell. Or should we give everyone a chance to?
Yeah.
Clear out since it's kind of.
Yeah.
Disruptive. Thank you all. All right. Sorry about that, Councilman Burrell.
You need to do a motion and second, then discussion.
All right. All right. Would someone like to make a motion on this item?
I'd like to suspend with the rules and have commentary before.
Sounds good.
Second. Second.
So we got a motion and a second to suspend with the rules?
We got a hold on it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Motion passes. Go ahead, Councilman Burrell.
Okay. Uh, you know, a lot of times when you interrupt or you're challenging things, um, you might hit fifty percent of the city in favor, fifty percent against. Those are the, those are the kind of things that politicians dread. It just, you can't, you're just not making any friends. Um, and then, but, but ninety percent, ninety-five percent, maybe even more than that of our decisions are pretty easy. This job, it's pretty apparent as to what the right answer is. Uh, and, and that makes voting easy. And most of the time with things, once they make it to the agenda, they're going to be, they're going to be voted on purchases, budget items, things such as that. But when you, when you come to the, the medical cannabis dispensary vote, uh, you, you're going to get some opinions that, that may vary. Uh, I'm, I'm sure that there are physicians that are opposed. I'm sure that there's physicians that are going to write prescriptions. They must be in favor of them or else they wouldn't be writing prescriptions for this. But, uh, sometimes when you're undecided, you, you listen to the people that puts you in office. And for me, this is me speaking. Uh, I have had a vast number of people that contacted me that are unsupportive of this. And I have had exactly two people, and, and most of those people that reached out to me were by, were via phone call. It was a personal phone call. It takes a lot for a citizen to pick up the phone, tell a council member their opinion. It's easy to send an email or even a text, but I have had two emails in favor. Both of those people were in the cannabis industry, so I would have to say they're probably biased. The gentleman tonight, I spoke in favor. That'd be the third person I've heard from that seemed to be in favor. Uh, the, the two people that were in favor, one of them is a paid lobbyist and one of them works with the cannabis industry. And something that they said to me, trying to convince me to vote for it, if anything, pushed me further away. And they said that we have got to get this passed in, in Fairhope. You know, why do we have to have this passed in Fairhope? Uh, to some people's concerns about trying to get a foothold. I don't really know exactly what the end game is. what the end game is, but it's a risk to find out. So I'm trying to find the benefit of, of this. And what, what, you know, if you're building a new park in the, in the city, kids have a new place to play, and people have a, a place to, to relax, Foley and Daphne opposed passing on its allowing a dispensary. So I don't think if we were to deny this, we're depriving our citizens the ability to go somewhere and get a prescription filled. But I'm listening, for me, I'm listening to the vast majority of people, the overwhelming majority of people that have contacted me, and if it makes it to a vote, I'm, I'm casting a no vote permission.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I, I too was inundated with, with conversation and calls and emails for the You know, I've, I've, I'm going to be transparent. I was, I was going to, I was going to think about voting yes on this because, you know, I've seen people that are on hospice, palliative care. Empirically, I've seen these things work to help children, adults, for real medicinal use, not recreational use, but medicinal use for people that are in severe pain. So my mindset is not recreational. My mindset was for those that truly need an alternative besides opiates and what we have on the market, Maranal. They already have marijuana on the market. Maranal is one of them. So we've been using Maranal for a while now. I mean, way back in the eighties, Maranal's been used in a pill form. But we, what we don't have is enough information on commercial or flower or these tinctures in retrospective, retrospective studies to give us information on the good or the bad. So we're learning, we're in a process of learning. But to echo Jack, because I don't have or have been inundated with people here in Fairhope telling me that they want this dispensary, then it doesn't matter what I agree with, what I disagree with, it matters what the people want. So, and that's why I'm here to serve. So, but, you know, you're never going to win this argument. This is like my ethics class. I don't know if any of y'all took ethics. Any of y'all take ethics?
I was a lawyer, where they don't teach that.
Yeah, you know. So, you know, I'm glad he's honest, you know? He's an honest man. But you never get a real answer, you know? You got Socrates on one hand, you know, epistemology, and then you got, you got Plato on the other hand, who's all about education and love and social. So you never really get a good answer. So you got both ends of the stick. So, so I'm not going to speak whether it's good or bad, but I am going to speak to what I'm hearing the people tell me in my ear. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be brief. Um, I didn't have a lot of people reach out to me one way or the other. I don't know if that's good or bad.
It's because you won't pick up your phone.
Uh, I try, yeah, that's good. Shush. Um, but I, I tried to approach this the, the way that I approach most things that, that are debated issues in Fairhope. And I, the first thing I try to do is look for the need, all right? If, if there's a need in Fairhope, and, and I know there is disputed beliefs on whether or not medicinal marijuana serves a valid purpose or not. I'm not here to make that decision, okay? There are doctors who say it does, just like there are doctors that say it does not, okay? And so the issue for me is, is, is that a need that we have in Fairhope? And if it is, am I depriving our community of something by turning this down? And so that's one of the things I thought. Even Dr. Whitmer, who came last week, who had, who was critical of the dispensary, identified several instances where even in his opinion, marijuana does serve a medical purpose for certain patients under certain conditions. But with the knowledge that some surrounding communities have already passed this dispensary ordinance, I don't believe there's any reason that the citizens of Fairhope would be deprived of anything in the event it was decided they didn't need it by their medical professional. So then the next thing I look at is, well, what's the other reason to have it in Fairhope? And one of the answers was, well, you'll create tax revenue. And the issue for me is sometimes money's not the best answer. I said it a second ago in, in response to the planning issue is, if profit is the only reason to suspend with the rules, there's not much reason for rules in the first place. And so if the reason to create this ordinance or pass this ordinance for a dispensary is because we might profit for some tax revenue, trust me, I get it. That's an important part of what we do as a city. Tax revenue pays for a lot of the things that we get to enjoy, but not with the uncertainty that comes along with something like this, that we just simply don't know that much about. And for those reasons, I, in the event it comes for a vote, I would be voting no.
All right. Councilman Bean?
Well, I kind of made my comments last week a little clear. The deal is, I guess, the first thing that got me started on this was the fact that we as a council are trying to find a place to put one of these things. And it's like, well, we can't put it here because it's too open. We can't put it here because it's in the C, in the business district. Well, it sounded to me like we're trying to hide it. And anything that you're trying to hide, I don't know about Plato's philosophy, but Boone's philosophy is, it's not a good deal. I am not for voting for something that we're trying to hide. And I think I made that pretty clear last week, that, you know, there's no sense discussing it, because if you vote no, you don't have to worry about it. But I've never been one to in favor of voting for something I felt is pretty strong and it's wrong, and I have to feel this is wrong.
Thank you, sir. A lot of good comments. Y'all have obviously put a lot of thought into all of this, and I know we've certainly heard from a lot of citizens and appreciate citizen engagement. I can't, have no medical background, so I can't speak to the benefits of it. It seems like there's certainly opinions, strong opinions on, on both sides of, of whether or not it's beneficial. To Councilman Robinson's point, I guess it's been passed in Foley and Daphne and maybe Spanish Ford, so it would still be accessible. And it, it seems like the majority of citizens in Fairhope that have at least spoken up and reached out have not been in, in favor of it. And if the only redeeming reason that you're coming up with to do it is, is to generate some tax revenue, and that's potentially debatable, whether you would be able to charge taxes if it was considered pharmaceutical or not, but it just sounds like there's not much interest in moving forward. So counsel, do you have any, is there any interest in moving forward, making a motion on this item or not? No? All right. Sounds like it's, dies on the vine. Thank you very much, counsel, and I appreciate all the comments. Thank you to everybody who came, came out here to speak. So, all right, that item will not move forward. Item number nine is a final adoption, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1510 and repealing and replacing ordinance number 1691, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies and Procedures Ordinance, specifically Section 6 Employee Benefits, Section 6.01 Health Insurance Benefits, and Section 6.05 Health Insurance Benefits for Eligible Retirees. This is the Wellness Incentivized Program, or the Wellness Incentive Program, introduced at city council meeting on October 10th. And at this point, that was to charge, is it $50 a month, or is that the correct amount?
That's correct. It's $50 a month until an employee has their biometric screening, and if that indicates health coaching, you have to do the health coaching. But once you do your biometric screening and, and do the health coaching that's required, you would not have to pay the $50.
Okay. And that's just to help us combat the rising cost of health insurance.
Does that include just personnel, or does that include everybody who's covered under our insurance?
Right now, it is personnel and retirees. We talked about that in the first step, and then I have, I have said publicly that probably the next step would be adding the spouses. And it would be only employees who are covered, covered under our health insurance.
Counsel, any questions about this?
The cost of the biometric screening, there's no cost to the?
No, not to the employee, no, sir.
I mean, that's something that's done at our civil health clinic.
It would be done at the civil health clinic. We are actually taking appointments for December 1st, but as long as you do it before December 31st. Lot of our employees, I say a lot, probably 60 have already had it done. They were done earlier this year in March, I believe, but then the remainder of them would need to do it by December 31st.
And how much, how long does it take for them to get a screening? They just go draw some blood?
They, they do. They weigh, blood pressure, they do a few things, but it, I mean, less than 15 minutes, if that.
And really, that is, if you can identify some potential trouble issues, I mean, you're really helping the employees as much as you're helping the city.
Right. Just trying to help them manage those chronic illnesses that cost our insurance plan a lot of money.
Preventative.
Exactly.
Prophylactic.
All right. Counsel, any additional questions for the mayor? Someone like to make a motion on final adoption?
Second.
Got a motion and a second on final adoption. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I want to just, I just really do want to say that I feel, I, I hope that the employees see this, or it is, it is in their best interest, not because it could save them money, but because it could help your long-term health, it could increase your, your lifespan, and we do have to get cost under control, because I've kind of used this lately and several times, is, you know, if we can't get healthcare benefits, healthcare costs, I mean, under control, you know, we, it's hard to have 5% raises and, and hard to have merit raises, and I would much rather spend, you know, money on giving employees more pay than paying for medical bills, and it just, and it makes sense. And I, you know, I really hesitated saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway. You know, something probably not known by most people in this room, I think the council knows it, but. I had some screening about three years ago, and I found out I had cancer. Didn't know it. If I hadn't had that screening, I'd probably be dead right now. And it involves some very major surgery, so get rid of it. And so the screening is important, and, and it can save your life, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you for sharing that, Councilman.
Thanks, Jack.
Any additional comments? Clerk, will you call the question?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye. All right. Thank you. Ordinance passes. Next item up is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1269 user fees charged by the City of Fairhope City, Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department. Does that need to be introduced, or is this for final adoption?
Introduce.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. All right. And we have covered this, but at this point, does anyone have any questions, comments? Let this lay over for another week. All right. Let it lie over. Thank you. Item number 11 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope authorizes submission of a fiscal year 23A TRIP II grant to Alda requesting grant funds to construct that dedicated left and right turn lanes on Volanta Avenue at the intersection of Greeno Road, acceleration and deceleration lanes on US Highway 98, and signalized intersection, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign all required grant application documents on behalf of the city. And we did apply for this a couple, a year or two ago and trying again, so.
I'll move to authorize the submission of the grant.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Item number 12 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope accepts amendment number two to grant number eight Restore Act Working Waterfront and Greenspace Restoration Project Agreement for additional grant funds from the US Treasury in the amount of $5,705,339, and that the city council authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign the amended grant agreement on behalf of the city. And Jessica's here. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Any comments on this item?
Some will.
All right. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Item number 13 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Fulgham's Inc. for urban forestry consultant for the undeveloped 108 acres plus or minus, known as the Triangle Property at the north gateway to the city, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not to exceed fee schedule for the contract. And Richard covered this during the work session. Does anybody have any questions for Richard on this item? Or would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Item number 14 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Neil Schaefer Inc. for an RFQ Professional Engineering Services for Preliminary Engineering for the Fiscal Year 2023 TAP Grant Project on sidewalks on Blue Island Avenue and Fairwood Boulevard, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not to succeed, not to exceed fee with this firm. Sorry, slipped there. This is the third time we're going for this one? All right. Fingers crossed.
We got it.
Oh, we got it. This was the third time that we submitted for it. Yeah. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Item number 15 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of High Line Engineering for Professional Engineering Services for the power line conversion along Magnolia Avenue between Bancroft and Church Street, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate a not to exceed fee with this firm. As just for the underground engineering, for relocating those lines.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Mayor, thank you. It is, uh, elected department, I think it's a good move to mix it up a little bit and so that we can ensure that we get the best prices for our citizens.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Item 16 is a resolution to award bid 3822 to JTB Construction for the annual contract for the citywide asphalt and concrete repair for the Public Works Department on an as-needed basis, with a total bid proposal not to exceed the amount of $21 per square foot for the labor only. The city will provide all material, and the repairs would be in the City of Fairhope's utility jurisdiction as well as inside city limits. And Richard covered this, but it would apply to the different utility departments making cuts and things like that. So if they made a cut, it would come out of their repair budget.
Some will.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did we not want to, we didn't want to put a max on that? A lot of people probably put a max on that, Richard.
And it's really the, the, it's the agility or whoever's going to use it, it's, it's just a job. So if it, you know, it's a five by five panel, and it calculates after what, 525, then they write it first order and go have it done. I, you know, if, if, you want to put a max on it, I think that's okay.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't know. I'd just say we monitor it, just make sure that, you know, it's not, we think it's going to be 65,000 this year, and it turns out to be two and a half million, I mean.
Well, it would still go based on their budget. Where they have in their budget, you still got problems.
Okay. Oh, I was looking at the green sheet, and there wasn't a number on there. So you have a line item in your budget for maintenance?
Yes.
And that comes out of your maintenance budget?
Each one.
Okay. All right. I can buy that.
All right. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 17 is a resolution to award bid 40-22 to WR Mitchell Contractor Inc. Item number 17 is a resolution to award bid 40-22 to WR Mitchell Contractor Inc. for on-call contractor services for water and sewer department with a total bid proposal not to exceed the amount of $700,000 per year. The initial contract term would be for one year with extensions for two additional years, and this is something Jason indicated we may consider rebidding in 12 months, just putting feelers out and seeing if the pricing has improved at all for that mobilization fee, so. Any questions for Jason? Any comments on this?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and two seconds. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 18 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of a cable modem service for Barnwell Founders and Manly Parks for the IT Department, with MediaCom as sole source provider, with a three-year contract and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, the cost not to exceed $19,372.05 per month. I mean, and five cents, which was 175 to 179 per month per location. And Jeff discussed this in work session.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further comments or discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Number 19 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of one McElroy T412 track fusion machine for the water wastewater department from Consolidated Pipe and Supply as the sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by Code of Alabama. The cost will not exceed $75,453, and Jason covered this in the work session. Got a motion? And a second? Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 20 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of installation of an access control system for the new planning department office in the Pecan Building for the IT Department from Security 101, and authorizes procurement based on access control. For the Pecan Building is exempt from the formal bidding per the Code of Alabama 1975. The cost will not exceed $15,864.87, and this is for the badge readers on the doors that else employees will swipe to go in and out of that building. Any questions or comments on this? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion on this budget, no?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 21 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Flower Plannings for the Public Works Department, total cost not to exceed $117,434.81.
Over a second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 22 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of a server storage upgrade for the IT Department to provide processing and storage for all city servers. Server storage upgrade will be purchased through Purchasing Cooperative Omnia Partners Public Sector, and does not have to be let out for bid. Total cost not to exceed $109,608.29. This is for three servers that are in their fifth year, where they replace them all simultaneously, two kept at the police department and one at Public Works. Jeff covered this item. Any questions or comments on this?
It is $24,000 under budget, and if I recall these servers, even several years ago, Jeff was here, I think that they were, they got 100. Jeff, these were over 150, 160,000 last time we purchased them, weren't they? So the cost has gone down.
Yeah, we went back and forth quite a few times with a couple of different vendors, and we got some kind of special, we, end-of-the-year deal, but our timing was good, so we actually got the cost down pretty low.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be the only thing that's going down.
Yeah, do what I can.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion? We've got a, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 23 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of the annual renewal of the Kronos Timekeeping System Support and Software for the city for services from December 30th, 2022 to December 29th, 2023, for the IT department, with the cost not to exceed $26,655.65. This is a sole source service through Kronos, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. It's about $1,400 more than last year. That's not a overly significant increase compared to many of the increases we've seen so.
Make a motion for approval.
Got a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 24 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of inventory for Neptune Water Meters for the water wastewater department from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company as the sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on water meters are exempt from formal bidding per Code of Alabama. Cost not to exceed $500,000.
Make a motion, this was by five hundred meters.
All right, well, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 25 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement for one mower, max 20, 24-foot boom or equivalent for the Public Works Department from Coblenz Equipment and Parts Company, and the type of equipment is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Contract number T226, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. Total cost not to exceed 223, or 233,270, 221,404, of which is budgeted, so about 12,000 over budget. Any questions for Richard on this? Counsel, any comments?
5% increase, I don't know. Better than inflation.
Just more? More garbage cans needed, right?
No, I was thinking about the garbage cans, and I was thinking, well, something's got to go pay for you guys' raise, and you better leave a little bit on there.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 26 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of two 2023 Ford Explorers or equivalent for the Building Department from Stivers Ford Lincoln, and the type of vehicles needed are on the state of Alabama, Alabama Department Division of Purchasing Contract number T191L, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. Cost not to exceed $66,884. And this is for the Building Department for Eric.
Some move.
All right, we've got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further comment or any questions for Eric on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes. Item 27 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of two Cobra rear loader garbage trucks or equivalent from the sanitation department from Sansom Equipment Company, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Contract and has been nationally bid, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. Cost not to exceed $417,154. This is about a $65,000 overage, and as Richard covered in detail, he's currently accounted for $36,000 in his can audit and still working to find some additional money. I think he had a specific number of cans you still need to find, right?
128.
All right, 128 left. You can keep counting, though, after you get past that number, if you can find more. Does anyone have any questions for Richard on this? He covered it pretty well, I felt like, in the work session.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, we've got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I guess motion passes. Item number 28 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of one Ford Transit 250 full-size cargo van or equivalent from the Public Works Department from Stivers Ford Lincoln. The type of vehicle needed is on the state of Alabama Division of Purchasing Contract T191, and does not have to be let out for bid. Total cost not to exceed $44,022, $4,022 of which is not budgeted. And Richard covered this and indicated, you know, this is one that's available right now, and he can get it, it's on the lot. Someone else didn't pick it up, we would probably be paying more if we do not go with this one, so.
Some move.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion or any questions, Richard? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 29 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves procurement of a three-year lease for a Xerox printer copier from Xerox Corporation for the new planning department office at the Pecan Building for IT Department, and the lease is on the state contract, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. Total cost not to exceed $7,696.08 for the three-year lease, plus the cost of Prince Xerox Corporation. This would be Jeff and Hunter working on this combined, I guess.
Make a motion to approve?
Got a motion? And a second? Any further discussion?
What's the cost of the print?
I believe it was like .001 cent for black and white and a nickel for a color print. I don't know if we can...
That's close enough, I was making sure.
It's not more than that.
$0.50 for black and white.
Yeah.
Black and white is having 0066 of a cent, and color is .0506 of a cent.
Pretty close.
That's awesome.
All right, any additional questions, or would someone like to make a motion on this item?
Some move.
Got a motion? Oh, we already have a motion, a second?
And a second?
It's been a long night. All right, we got a motion and a second, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 30 is a resolution that the City Council hereby authorizes and approves the request of the City of Fairhope and the Downtown Fairhope Business Association to close Section Street from Magnolia Avenue to Johnson Avenue and Fairhope Avenue from Bancroft to Church on Saturday, October 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, the downtown trick-or-treat event. And I can attest that there are a lot of kids running around that day. Motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 31 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure, to approve procurement of the 2022 Lighting of the Trees Stage miscellaneous equipment and labor cost to Sound Associates with the cost of $12,500 for the City of Fairhope's Lighting of Trees Celebration on November 17th, 2022. Any...
Make a motion to approve?
All right, we've got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. At this time, we will open up the floor for public participation on any items. You've got three minutes, come forward and give your name and address to the city clerk. All right, John, we're back down to you, I guess.
I got nothing, bud. I said you guys are doing good. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. All right, that's it. Counsel, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Got a motion, second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here.